Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco's council meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the Pasco, on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-w.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting of, meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, can I get a roll call, please? Council members Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
Here.
And Mayor Barajas. Present, and would you please rise and join me with the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And now we move on to item four on our agenda, consent agenda. B, communicate bills and communications, to approve claims in the total amount of $4,572,929.93. And with that, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Mayor Protem Maloney, seconded by council member Serrano. And can I get a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Campos.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
And Barajas.
Yes.
Thank you. And with that, we move on to item five. Five, proclamations and acknowledgements, none listed. Moving on to item six, visitors other than agenda items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by the council over time and after deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions may be best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizens with comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. And with that, I would like to invite anyone from the audience to use this time to make a comment to council, but I do want to remind you to please stay within the three minutes. Thank you. And it looks like no one in the audience will be speaking today, so we move on to our next item, reports from committees and/or officers. Do we have any reports from any of the committees? Any events that may have been attended? Mayor Protem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Obviously, it was a, it was, it's been a little while since we've seen each other, so I, I was having to go back and just make sure I got everything. But I will say that the, the city held a volunteer barbecue on Saturday, mostly run by, I think, the Parks and Rec Department primarily. It was really nice to see, to be able to set up this sort of thing, to be able to, you know, really appreciate the people who voluntarily serve the city and, and come out and show, and, you know, just show up. It's, you know, it's certainly credit for how good our city is and how amazing our city is, you know. A lot goes to, to staff, but also goes to the unpaid volunteers that really, that serve with their hearts. I, council members, remember Serrano was there as well? I think that's all, we, we have, yes, that's right, you were, as well. So we had, you know, three of the council members there and, you know, a number of volunteers show up. I will say, one thing that was really awesome as part of that is I saw the setting up of our, our esports program as well that was going on at two o'clock that very afternoon. So from 12 to two was our barbecue, and then they were setting up and getting going on, you know, esports and some of that streaming gaming going on with that. So I don't know much about that, I'm not sure I understand how, how all that works, but it was awesome to see, just one more reason for people to be down in, using our community space to do, do cool things that are recognized around the, around the country and the world. After that, I briefly stopped by the Pride Festival at Volunteer Park. That was a, a very well-attended event, it looked very busy, lots of folks were there, and so it was good to see, again, a good use of our, of our public spaces and parks. So that's all I have right now, thank you.
Councilmember Serrano.
Just like to say that same day was Councilman Milne's birthday, so happy like 35 or whatever it is, David.
And go ahead.
Okay. In this last week, I did have the pleasure of attending with our mayor. We attended the Habitat for Humanity, and it was put on by Tyson Foods, and it was just really good to see community involvement in certain areas of Pasco where they allow people to build their house, and they talk about the different hours, and all the different partnerships it takes to make Pasco a better place, and it was just good to see the community come out for a block party, and had a real good time, and, again, it was good to see some of the staff and other council members from other cities. We saw some from Richland and Kennewick, and there's also some state representatives as well, so it was a good time, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll share briefly, Friday was a very busy morning, actually, last week. I did attend the LIGO grand opening. We had Governor Ansley there, and a lot of officials coming in from Washington, D.C., and all over the state, really. Also did attend with councilmember Milne, the Habitat for Humanity celebrating their 100 and, oh my gosh, 149th house, if I'm not mistaken, 149th house here in the City of Pasco. Great partnership with Habitat for Humanity, they have not expanded to Richland or Kennewick yet, but they did, like councilmember Milne said, share a little bit about the partnerships with the city, builders, schools, everyone pitching in to lend, from designing the homes by students at Delta High, to the partnerships with the builders and materials being provided. Tyson, I will give them this, Tyson did donate a meat box to every family that celebrated their inauguration of their home. Do you want to add something for tomorrow, Tuesday, an invitation to Ochoa Middle School? They're led by Mr. Alan Mattson, their mariachi band will be performing tomorrow at 6:00 at Ochoa Middle School, so there is an invite for tomorrow. And no further comment from Councilman Serrano.
I apologize if this is Groundhog's Day, I thought I reported on Memorial Day, but I, looking at it, that would have been last Monday, so I'm guessing I didn't, maybe I had a dream about it. Regardless, it was an awesome event, so thank you very much, the Parks and Rec and the Cemetery Department. As always, it's, it's, it's impressive to see a city investing in our cemetery. Each year, whether it's Veterans Day or Memorial Day, when I get to host an event out there, there's something new. This year was the canine unit, where they dedicated that wall, I guess, and, and the little rock, and then the, of the dog bronze statue, whatever you call that. I mean, it was phenomenal work, for one. We had local partners who did the work, the powder coating, the welding, so I, I apologize, I don't, didn't retain those names, but we recognized them at the event, so we appreciate that. And then, nothing better than just, we had a 92-year-old veteran, Korean War veteran, who we were able to recognize, and that, I mean, really made that an extra special day, just to see, you know, older gentleman struggling with his health, but still came out, even though there was threat of rain, and then to see how emotionally moved he was with the various parts of our, of our event was, I think, the reward in and of itself. So again, thank you very much for the city staff, for all you put into that, thank you for making our cemetery a place where people who don't just have to go there, but they want to be there and, and stick around to visit with their deceased, however they do that, so thanks again, I appreciate being a part of that event.
Thank you for that, and again, happy birthday to councilmember Milne. And with that, we move on to item seven B, the Happo Center Energy Improvements Discussion. City Manager Dave.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council, a few comments and some background before County Administrator Johnson comes up to address the council. So the city and county have shared responsibilities, the Happo Center formally track through an interlocal agreement dating back to 1994. That agreement's set to expire in a couple of years, in 2024. But I'll note the facility itself was part of a, really part of an economic development strategy between the city and county that led in part to some of the development we've seen up in the Road 68 area, the hotels, the, it supports that grocery out there, some of the restaurants, and continues to do that for a number of businesses out in that area today. There was an amendment to the ILA back in 2014, where the parties agreed to pay 50% of any operating cost, efficient deficits where expenditures exceed revenues in, in any particular calendar year. I'll note that when I first arrived at Pasco, right about that time, those deficits were pretty significant, and county's done a lot of work to close that gap, the management of the facility over the last few years, to where it's really next to nothing now. The facility, though, is approaching 30 years in age, and there's, and as are some of its major systems, such as lighting, heating, and cooling. Parking lot, for instance, is in need of resurfacing. There certainly has been investment, count, there's been new carpeting, new flooring, commercial kitchen improvements. Most recently, the arena area was upgraded with a concrete floor, which allows greater use of the facility, greater revenues, and, and allows more competitive competitiveness for larger events, or even allowing for simultaneous events. The, the arena portion, however, is lacking adequate cooling, and so there's a need to take it, for that as well, to take advantage of the use of the full facility. So as the city is a partner of the facility, County Administrator Johnson's here tonight to discuss the results of an energy audit of the facility, a recent audit, which identified several million dollars and needed HVAC rehabilitation and other improvements to the facility, interior, exterior lighting, et cetera, and also the fact that the city, excuse me, the county be under a deadline for compliance with new state energy requirements, and will be subject to future fines if compliance is not achieved. So county is here, Mr. Johnson is here to talk to council tonight, a little bit about the commission's desire to explore with the city its ability and willingness to further partner in the Happo facility. So with that, turn it over to County Administrator Johnson.
Thank you, and good evening, members of the city council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I am appreciative of the partnership that we enjoy on a number of fronts, not just the Happo Center, but have an opportunity to work with key staff people throughout the city on a number of engagements, and we welcome that partnership, and hopefully can continue to improve it and get it better. It's sort of a dance we do when we have overlaying jurisdictions, as it were, that can sometimes result in a little bit of conflict, but I appreciate Dave and the professionalism of your staff to make sure that that, that relationship continues in a positive way. I, I won't reiterate necessarily a whole lot of what Dave just explained, because he gave a great kind of historical background of where we came from to where we are today with respect to the Happo Center. We have known for some time, this project got pushed back a little bit because of COVID, but we have been working with the state, and through McKinstry, they are a nationally-recognized energy services company that has a contract with the Department of Enterprise Services that we contracted with to perform an energy audit of our, our systems out at the Happo Center. Many of our HVAC, electrical systems, lighting, the roof, some of those things are original to the building and have not been replaced or sufficiently upgraded over the years, and we are now looking at, in, in many cases, assets that are probably 25% or more beyond their expected useful life. And we're down to finding parts on eBay, if, if we can find them at all, for some of our systems out there, and so we are well aware of the pressure we're under to, to make sure that these changes can be made, so that we can continue the mission of the Happo Center to support this community with a, an event center and expo hall and a place to hold events. I, I'm assuming that you're all very familiar with the, the mission and nature of the Happo Center, I won't go into that detail, but happy to answer your questions about that if, if you have them. So when we engaged McKinstry, and they have some representatives here tonight, I don't plan on getting into the, the real detail of the audit and their, their findings and those kinds of things, but if you do have questions that are beyond my technical expertise, they are available for answering your questions, as well as the general manager of the Happo Center, Tom French, is with me tonight. Dave mentioned three areas of a particular challenge to us right now, the arena, the atrium, and expo hall, kind of the three major components of that facility. And those lighting and air conditioning and heating systems are the main focus of this energy audit, so we could try to reduce our energy consumption. I think Dave also mentioned the fact that we are up against a clock with the state legislature adopting the Clean Buildings, Clean Buildings Act in 2019 that places a burden on any building over 50,000 square feet, which obviously the Happo Center meets that threshold. And in, as of 2027, we have to start meeting those energy usage parameters, or face significant fines from the state. We have, because of the, the financial impact and the, and the total cost of what all we wanted to do was somewhere in the neighborhood of 16 to 18 million dollars, that's a, an amount that exceeds the county's current capacity to fund. We do have some ARPA dollars that we intend on designating toward a portion of this overall project, but it's clearly outside of the financial scope of our ability to do it all at once. So we asked McKinstry to help us kind of phase the project, and we broke it down into three major phases. First was the replacement of light kind of assets for heating and cooling. The second phase would include adding a cooling component to the arena side, where the old rodeo arena used to be, and is now a concrete floor, as Dave mentioned, that facility does not have air conditioning, and so in July and August, early September, it can be, you know, 95 degrees outside, it'll be 105 inside there, and it makes it difficult for us to use that for anything but very low-return events in, in those months. So we would like to put us on the path to, to making that upgrade to the facility at some point. So the first phase, as I said, really focuses on lighting, it focuses on repairs to the roof, it focuses on replacing some of the heating and cooling units in the, on the expo side, the atrium side. I don't know how many of you have driven by the facility at night, but those outdoor parking lot lights are very dim, they're not modular, we can't control them in terms of increasing the brightness or dimming them down. They're up too high to really be a safety benefit, and so we have known that we need to replace those with modern LED-type lighting that meets both the safety as well as the, just the, the look of the facility. We think that our partnering with the Happo Credit Union on the naming rights allowed us to paint the facility and put new signage up, which is a great improvement, but we still have a lot to do in that regard. So, as I said, right now, we're looking at a, a first phase of about $6 million. The county is willing to consider using ARPA funds for a portion of that. My ask here tonight is for kind of, kind of a two-point ask. One is, as Dave mentioned, we have an interlocal agreement that we signed back in 2014 that is set to expire in 2024. I'd like to begin our discussions with the city through his office, kind of renegotiating that, or re-signing that, reapproving it for another probably 10-year period, and put in the right parameters to that agreement, so that the city's satisfied that it's getting its benefit, as well as the county. The second part, which is really the bigger ask, is to ask the city to consider contributing to the capital improvement costs that we're engaging in, in this project, with improving energy efficiency within the building, improving the functionality of the building to take advantage of other opportunities for events that we don't currently have available. I, I would expect that at some point in the near future, we'd be delighted to come back before the city council walk through the details of what, what we're expecting, which systems need to be replaced and why, it's probably a deeper dive than perhaps we need to consider tonight, but we're prepared to do that, so that you and the public that you serve has an opportunity to ask whatever questions you need to ask, and that we do this as transparently as possible. So without me rambling on any further, I'm happy to stand for your questions. As I said, Tom French, who's the general manager of the Happo Center, and Kristy Hoff Power and Scott McGann from McKinstry are here tonight to answer any specific questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your presentation. Any questions or comments, Councilman Campos?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Quick question, will you be, or are you planning to also ask Capo to chip in for any capital improvements at all, since they have got a naming right to it, and they've already allocated some money for signage? Does it make sense that they'd also chip in for capital improvements?
The, the naming rights agreement that we have with the Happo Center has a, I'm going to look to Tom, is that a 10-year life? Yeah, I believe a 10-year life, at which point we would either renegotiate with them or go back for a bid for somebody else to, to rename it. We have not pursued them for additional capital. There are a couple of things that they are doing to improve the place, they're putting in a, a drive-up ATM machine, that's really more for their benefit, but it is an investment in the, in the property that, at their expense. We have not asked them to contribute to the energy efficiency of the building, as we don't really view them as a, as an owner, they are simply a vendor that provides naming rights, and that revenue from those naming rights is allocated per year over the 10-year period.
Okay.
Any further questions from Councilmember, Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you, Mr. Johnson, for the presentation, and, and I'll, I'll certainly admit to my fellow council members, as well as publicly apologize to, to Mr. French, I know he's reached out to me, and I, I've had a really busy last month or so, so I had not had an opportunity to get back to him, so do want to acknowledge that he has reached out to me to, to go through these in more details, as I'm one of the members of the advisory committee from, representing the City of Pasco, so certainly my, my call up. So, in the past, Mr. Johnson, we've, the county commissioners, over time, have had varied views on whether this is a county function or not, at, at all, like whether this is even be within the scope of, of that. I haven't talked to all of our new commissioners, our current commissioners, as to where, where they stand on that. Can you, I don't want you to speculate, but do they're stated, do they have a stated public stance on where they're, where they feel about the long-term, the longevity of this facility?
Yeah, and I, I don't want to attribute too much of my thoughts into their public discussions, but there have been statements made from time to time about whether owning a facility of this nature is really within the correct scope of county government. It is a unique facility, a unique asset, not only to the community, but it's unique for Franklin County, in that we don't have ownership in other commercial or profit-seeking type enterprises, and, and frankly, it's not what we're best at, or we just don't, we don't have the, the structure to really do that really, really well. We're, we're working to improve that, and as, as Dave mentioned, we've come a long way in the last seven years that, that I've been engaged, and that Tom French has been engaged in trying, trying to make that a more, not profitable necessarily, but fulfill the need for a public service without exponential cost to the citizens or to the city or county that, that supports it. From time to time, we have heard requests or suggestions that we, we sell the facility, and that's more of a philosophical position than it is a practical business one. There are some difficulties that would occur if we were to try to sell that. One, who do you sell it to? And if, and depending on who the buyer is, what would they convert that use to? Right now, because it's a publicly-owned facility, we're not generating property tax revenue, but if it was sold to a private property, or a private owner, potentially we would see property tax revenue, so there's that discussion that would have to take place. Obviously, the, the Happo Center is designed to generate sales tax revenues in, in the area, in the restaurants and other retail businesses that have been built in that Road 68 burden corridor since the Happo Center was built. I wasn't here at the time it was built, some of you may have been, but might remember that that was a pretty bare spot of ground until some of those developments came in. So I, I believe that all three of our current commissioners, and even our former commissioners, understand and appreciate the value of that facility to the Tri-Cities community, the economic benefit that it generates. We have had some discussions, it's been a while, probably pre-COVID, since we've had any update from the Visit Tri-Cities group that does a lot of economic study analysis of the financial impact that that facility has in the community, but even as of a few years ago, it was a significantly positive economic impact to, to the area. So I, I don't, I don't believe that there is any concerted effort to try to sell the property. We're partnering with the port a little bit to market those vacant properties that the county owns that are joined to the Happo Center, just to the west of Convention Center Boulevard, nearby the My Place Hotel. We own about five acres, and then the, the two grassy areas that are kind of on the west side of the parking lot, we think there's probably a better utility for those spaces as well. So there has not been a serious discussion about trying to sell or get the county out from under it that way, but I, I know the commissioners are open to, to that discussion if, if there are those that think that that's the right approach.
I appreciate that, because again, in, in the past, we've had, and of, of course, that was before great strides were made to reduce the, the, the operating losses that we were seeing out of the facility, that was a much hotter topic, too, that they, that the number of county commissioners saw it as a big drain, wanted to divest, so it's, I think it's good to hear that there's not a, an immediate pressing desire to get rid of it at all costs, like I think I, I won't put words into your mouth, like I had heard a number of years ago. You know, I, I struggle with this particular topic, because I believe very strongly in public facilities, especially ones like this. I jointly wrote an article with Michael Novakovich back in 2019, specifically focusing on convention centers and the importance and usefulness of them in terms of economic engines and drivers for a community. We had some numbers in that, I don't, not logged into Tri-C, my Tri-C Herald account right now, so I can't pull it up, and I don't have my notes with me, but it's, it's a significant driver of jobs and, and economic functions. I remember a few years ago, there was a chess tournament, I think, there, and it was a massive impact on the community, all the restaurants were full during those hours, the hotels were booked up, and it was a, it was a huge benefit, and then when you have people rolling in like that, that's jobs, it's people's businesses that are thriving because we have people coming that wouldn't otherwise be there for, for, to support, you know, because of a facility like this to support. But I'll be honest, I struggle a little bit, because I've been serving on the advisory board for, for over- But I'll be honest, I struggle a little bit because I've been serving on the advisory board for, for over four years. It was one, it was one of the first boards I was appointed to. But as part of the advisory board, I'm part of the city's voice in helping the commissioners understand where we're coming from. And yet, I don't think that that has been taken seriously. The naming rights is a perfect, for instance, that never even came before the advisory board, before a million dollar decision was made, changing the name of the facility. And the advisory board never even heard that. So I feel unfortunately like the county has not seen the city as a partner until now, when we're, when, when we've had deferred maintenance on the facility. For thirty, oh, nearly 30 years. And so then we have a sixteen, a sixteen to eighteen million dollar gap. And now we're, we're being asked as a city to contribute more financially, when we've been contributing to taking care of the operating loss. For the, for the entire duration or most of the duration of the facility's existence. So I'm struggling a little bit just in terms of that I don't feel like this partnership has been very equal. From the county respecting the city's role in potentially helping, you know, guide where the operations, where this maintenance has been going. And not the least of which, because for my entire time on, on the advisory committee, I've been asking for a list of deferred maintenance. And this is, I've been on the, again, for four and a half years, and we're just now seeing a list of deferred maintenance. So that's four years of me not having any idea of how bad the backlog is, while knowing that we have a large backlog. So again, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit. Obviously, like I said, I support the facility, but I don't, I don't necessarily feel like the county's been a, a welcome, a willing partner with the city. In this endeavor along the way. And so now we're at a spot where, now we're, we're hitting towards crisis mode. So I don't have any particular conclusions I'm going to. I just want to just, just let people understand where I'm standing and where a pretty long history and a lot of hours I've spent. Looking at this facility, supporting this facility and trying to make it the best facility I can. So, and, and I don't want this to be an offense on, on Mr. French, who I know has, when you look at the, the operating changes that have been made and how that has reduced the, the losses have been substantial. And taking it from a front burner issue, where really that facility, I think, was, was being seen as a, almost a write off of, of complete loss for both the county and the city. To a spot where we're now talking about potential operating, you know, net positives. You know, not accounting for the deferred maintenance that we have, we've been ignoring over time. So, so not to take away from the work that's been done, but as we're looking at how to approach this, those, those things, those things are going to be very top of mind for me. And I'd, I'd appreciate if the, you know, county commissioners can make some very clear statements as to where they see the partnership in this. And be clear to us as city council, as a, as a separately elected body, how they see a partnership with us when, given that, given how they've responded and not partnered with us in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Your involvement and awareness of these issues is very much acknowledged and noticed. And I, I don't want to make any excuses for the advisory committee not being as functional as it should be. COVID obviously put us in a bit of a crunch, where we couldn't have in-person meetings. But I, I recognize the position that you have, and I don't disagree with it. And that's part of this dialogue that we want to continue to foster regarding signing a new agreement. Is the need of the city and to recognize the, the issues that you guys have for making this productive and work, work. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further comment, Councilwoman Serrano?
Thank you. This one actually goes to our staff, I, I think specifically to Zach. If I recall, two, three weeks ago, we just sent out RFPs for two pads that are out there for, just for information, two gravel lots. Kind of the, I guess, burden side of the Dust Devil Stadium. My question is, in the responses we have received, are we getting a strong indication that the continued operations of Hapo is driving any of these decisions? From those who are responsive?
We've received some soft inquiries on it. The RFP has opened up for a period of three months. So we do have a lot of time there. However, we did take into account Hapo Center's attendance throughout the year, both good years and bad. You know, pre-COVID and, and, and the, the last couple of years. And really is a sense to help market that area, just to see, this is how many people are there throughout the year. In addition to that, we utilize the attendance numbers we get for the soccer complex, the softball complex, and the expanded season for the Dust Devils as well.
Right. No, I appreciate that. I just know that's a multifactorial, you know, element of the value of those properties. But as Councilman Maloney has indicated, there's still some strong lingering issues as far as the financial viability. Signet can ask, as you've suggested, Mr. Johnson, eighteen, nearly twenty million dollars. That said, if it's, I mean, I, I think it's phenomenal that we pulled the indoor football team, right, from Kennewick. Anything to pull from Benton County is always a win in mind, in my book, especially when it comes into the city. That said, you know, I mean, those are things we have to look at, is the viability and then weighing it against the ultimate cost. So I don't have anything specific aside from, as you guys develop your, you know, analysis, I'd like to really see. What the front loaded costs are, what the continuing costs are. And what the city would need to come up with to fund these things adequately, obviously, will be the critical element. And then turning it back over to staff, how or whether we can fund those without dipping into some pots that we want to leave alone. So that's my two cents without seeing it in writing.
Yeah, well, thank you. And you mentioned a couple of important things. Pulling the arena football program into the Hapo Center was a good win. That has extended benefits. There are other athletic organizations that can use that same facility for some youth sports tournaments and other things. So it has exponential effects by being able to do that. Yeah, we're more than happy to, to brief you individually or as a, as a board and have those discussions. So thank you.
Thank you again. Uh, Councilman Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your presentation. I did appreciate it, and I appreciated the part where you talked about, you know, if it was going up for sale or the idea of that. I know that's something that I've heard a lot from the community. I did have one quick question. I know what you're talking about, to make it more energy efficient. Has there any been like work with like the state or the PUDs to try to, I mean, as far as grants or anything? Because obviously, six million is a huge lift. And it's amazing that, I know things cost, but it's amazing that it would cost that much to improve the lighting facilities in that building. Can you just kind of give us any idea or?
We're pursuing financing wherever we can find it. So if there are grant opportunities or rebates, those kinds of things, we will include that in the analysis. McKinstry is really good at helping us find some of those things because of their expertise in the industry and their connections across the, the state, the region. But their, their expertise is good at helping us analyze what our real costs will be and what it's going to take to, to do this. When we first started down this road, we anticipated somewhere probably like a three to five million dollar project to do the whole thing. Obviously, we underestimated that. And this investment grade audit that, that they have done helped establish what the real cost is going to be. It's no secret, or you all are aware of what the current labor market and materials, supply chain issues, inflation, all of those things that are making construction or major capital kinds of projects. Exponentially more expensive than they were even just a couple of years ago. So we're, we're up against the clock a little bit. The longer we wait, the more that costly it's going to be. But yes, we're looking at whether we can get additional funding or help from the state. I, I mentioned the county's use of ARPA dollars, the Rescue Plan Act, we will use some of that. We have to spread that over a number of different programs and projects, of course. But we're looking at any kind of financial option that we can, we can locate.
Thank you.
Thank you for that again. And one last comment from Councilman Compos.
I'm, I'll make it quick. I just, what I heard you just say is that you're exploring opportunity for every financial asset you can get. And I'll go back to my previous question about have you asked Hapo for any proven on capital funds?
So far, we have not, but I appreciate the suggestion. It's certainly something we could take a look at and have a dialogue with them if they are interested in, willing to make a, a longer term commitment. I, I don't think that's a bad idea.
Thank you.
Thank you again. City manager, any further comment?
And I, I appreciate council's discussion tonight, provided some good insights for staff as well. So we'll explore some options with the county and report back to council. And just keep you apprised as these things go along. I appreciated the county administrators suggesting that this be part of a renewal process. I, I think there's things in that agreement beyond just this cost sharing piece that I think would be beneficial for the two parties to, to work through. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you again. And, and like everyone said, we wish to have a further partnership than just providing the finance part of it. Thanks again.
That's a point well taken. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Okay, and with that, we move on to item eight on our agenda, hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. We do have a public hearing, item eight A, public hearing and ordinance, Lamb Five LLC annexation. And Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and, and council. Tonight, or excuse me, this, this particular issue involves an annexation right in the middle of our urban growth area on 68 and Court Street. The Lamb Five LLC application. It involves approximately ninety acres and maybe fifty-two to fifty-five single family housing units in the area shown in green on the screen. It's on both sides of Road 68, just north of Court Street. The annexation process, of course, is very lengthy, but we're at the point now where the annexation petition, which is the document that actually performs the annexation. Has been certified as accurate and adequate by the county assessor. And the annexation ordinance has been prepared tonight for council's decision on the request.
Thank you. Before I open a public hearing, do we have any comments from our council members? Any questions? Seems like there is no questions or comments. Mr. Ferguson, do we need to do a disclaimer? No, thank you.
Nope, just open the public hearing. Thank you, though.
And with that, I will now open the public hearing. And we are open to any comments. Any comments from anyone in our audience regarding this public hearing? Second call for public comment. Third and final call for comment from the public regarding this topic. Hearing no comment, I am now going to close our public hearing and ask for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor Barahas. And I will say that I am grateful that this is a quieter annexation than last week, or last meeting. I move to adopt ordinance number four, five, nine, three relating to annexation and annexing certain real property to the city of Pasco. And further authorize publication by summary only.
I'll second that. It's moved by Mayor Pretamaloni, seconded by Councilwoman Roach. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And it passes unanimously. Thank you for that. And we move on to item B, another public hearing for Barker Ranch right of way vacation. Director White.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and council. And this issue involves a application for vacation of public right of way. That's located on the north signs, north side of Burns Road, about halfway between Broadmoor Boulevard and, and Dent Road. I think the agenda report explains the considerable unmitigated residential development that has occurred on the north side of Burns Road. Over the past, roughly the past decade or so. Likewise, the report explains the considerable amount of residential, commercial, and public development. That's poised for the Broadmoor area south of Burns Road. And, and council is well aware of the city's efforts, I think, in that regard, including establishing a tax increment financing district. So that the millions of dollars of public infrastructure and utility improvements can be funded through the increase in property tax values. However, staff has concluded that, given those circumstances, it's premature at this point to vacate the right of way. That has been requested for vacation and has recommended denial, at least currently, for the vacation request. Of course, if council is amenable to vacating the right of way, staff can return with an ordinance that accomplishes that. But again, as noted in our agenda report, the principal arterial standards are, are adequately and described in our comprehensive plan. And we're right there currently with this amount of right of way.
Thank you for that. And again, before opening the public hearing, do we have any questions from council to staff? Mayor Pretamaloni and then Councilman Serrano.
All right, I was just going to briefly say, Director White, so, so just to make sure I'm, I'm fully understanding the packet here. If we were to not have this additional right of way, we would struggle to meet our city design standards for arterial, arterial road. Which is what Burns is, is designated as. Is that a fair statement?
It, it's fair. We, we would be right at the minimum as stated in our, in our design standards. So I think there's ninety feet of right of way out there now. If we vacated the ten feet, we'd be at eighty feet, which is the bottom, the bottom limit, the starting point for a principal arterial.
I think we've, I've not seen a, a time in the past where we haven't needed to look at expansion and how we're going to add vegetation and other things to make, to make arterials look nice. You know, like, you know, Sanford looks nice or the, looking at Chapel Hill Boulevard and, and, and how the expansion is there. So, okay, thank you, I appreciate that additional context.
Thank you. I appreciate that question. I was kind of wrestling with that myself. What I don't see here, and maybe I missed it, what is the purpose, what is the request to requesting this for?
What is the request for the vacation?
Well, so they're requesting the vacation, but what is the intended use upon vacation?
Oh, I, well, we can probably address that during the hearing, but my, my guess is it's for additional property that's associated with the plat that's adjacent to the property or the right of way.
Okay, I think that would be helpful to know specifically because if we're going, intended to use that full space. I guess the other question I have is could we utilize right, right of way? Do we have right of ways south in that same area?
We, we, we have, excuse me, a right of way south of the intended vacation portion. And probably, it's likely that more will be dedicated at the project stage when development occurs on the south side of Burns Road.
Okay. So ultimately, this could be mitigated if we were to choose to vacate.
In theory, yes.
Okay. Appreciate that. I may have more questions.
Any further questions from council members before I open the hearing? Seeing none, I will now open the hearing and open for the public for any comment. Thank you, sir. If you'd like to state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Paul Laurentiev. My address is six, eight, one, four West Hennessy in Pasco. So my, my main purpose up here is just to express my frustration with this whole process. So when, when we purchased this property, it was sometime in 2020 or 2019. We had a short plat done to break up the property into five, five parcels. Part of that short plat, we dedicated the required right of way there along Burns Road. That was, there was an existing forty feet of right of way. We dedicated additional ten feet to give it fifty feet right of way. When we submitted for the preliminary plat, that fifty feet was also included in that right of way, just north of Burns Road. During our development review, the city staff requested that we reduced that right of way. This, that extra ten feet was not something that we pursued. It just, it was requested. We paid our engineer to make that change. I have invoices, suggests that I was able to pull up before the meeting that. All things said, it's not a very big cost. It was about eight thousand dollars. I know there was additional maybe three thousand dollars worth of surveying that we had, had to do. We submitted that application because, I mean, ten feet of backyard, it, it's a good thing to have. So only to be put through all of this and deny now, now what I have to do is I have to go back to engineers, pay them to redo the drawings. And then resubmit for the final plat. This, we, we are, we have submitted for the final plat. This will hold up our final plat. We, we struggle right, especially right now, to keep housing costs down. We try to, we try our best to provide affordable and quality homes to the residents. And this kind of stuff is not helpful whatsoever. That ten feet, if from the very beginning, there was plenty of opportunity when we applied for that vacation of the right of way. There was plenty of opportunity for the city staff. There was plenty of opportunity for the city staff to have that conversation with us, explain why this was possibly not a good idea. And we wouldn't need it. We, we did not really pursue it. It was something that was pushed on us, and we're like, okay, we'll take it. It's ten feet. But now we're, we're gonna be dealing with delays to get the projects going. Um, interest rates are rising. Um, a lot of people are gonna be priced out of homes by the time we're, uh, we get to the point of building homes again. And it's just, it's just frustrating dealing with this kind of stuff.
Thank you.
So, I, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Sir, can you stay up there real quick?
Councilmember Serrano?
So is this the only element of delay from the city side? Or have there been other iterations of the project that have been problematic?
I mean, ob- obviously, there were delays with the, the, with the city. I mean, nothing that wasn't out of the normal. I mean, there's, uh, it, uh, a project of this magnitude, you're, you're gonna have delays, there's back and forth. We do our best to work with the city and this generally, the city staff does a good job with, uh, working with us on, uh, uh, with the development community, I mean, uh, in my experience. Um, but just once in a while, you come up with something like that, and it's like, come on, but why are we doing this?
Just trying to fill out the full picture. Appreciate it.
And just a more and more comment from Councilman Compos?
Real quick, it sounded like, I wanna clarify, you said, you said, had something, and you weren't able to bring it tonight, tonight's meeting, is that right?
Um, I, I did have, uh, quite a bit of invoices that I did bring. Um, there were some that I couldn't pull up, but I, I can pull them up and email them over as well.
That's what I was getting to, is if you could, e- email whatever you think is pertinent to the clerk would be, would be helpful. I think that's probably important to maybe take a look at in the future.
Yeah, there, there's some costs, like the changes that we already paid to be done, but now there's gonna be additional delays because, um, uh, right, as, as of right now, uh, I just wanna make it clear, um, I would, I'm perfectly fine with, uh, the council denying this vacation, um, uh, just to keep the process rolling. Um, but I'm not gonna be fighting for that ten feet. We planned this project around not having that ten feet. We weren't expecting it. Um, it just happened that it was requested during the review process. The approved plans, uh, for the subdivision have a forty-foot right-of-way. It's designed for a forty-foot right-of-way. There's some questions that we have, so if that, um, that project is close to fifty percent complete. Um, the storm, uh, system is, uh, almost complete on Burns Road. Um, the curb is not complete yet. Obviously, the extension of the paving there is not complete. But right now, we're, we're gonna be forced to go back, redesign, adjust some of the costs, and also there's the, that ten feet, now that, that, there's a block wall that is going to be built with the subdivision, uh, along Burns Road. So with the extra ten feet, now that right-of-way is going to be in people's yards. Or we can move the block wall and add additional landscaping, but that is all stuff that should be decided at the very beginning, not at near, past fifty percent of construction.
Thank you again, and again, if you could connect with our clerk to provide those documents or emails that you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, second call for anyone, uh, wishing to make a comment on this issue. Third and final call for comment from our community, from members here in attendance. Seeing no further comment, I will now close this hearing. And can I get a motion?
Um, Mayor Barajas, I, I would like to ask some questions. Would you like to make, make a motion and have it seconded first before further questions and comment to staff? Or would you rather we go into discussion immediately?
We can have the motion first. If I'm not mistaken, we should have the motion first and then go into, um, discussion, and we can amend.
Okay, thank you. I move to deny the request of the, of vacation for a ten-foot right-of-way for Burns Road established per short plat twenty twenty dash twenty-two.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by council member, council, Mayor Pro Temeloni, seconded by council member, uh, Compos, and if we have any further discussion on this.
Thank you. Um, so what I, what I heard was two things. Um, one, there, there, there's a lot going on in my head when I think about this. Um, one, one of the things that's, I think, very strongly of, especially when we're talking about additional, um, you know, stone walls, is I think of some of the developments along, um, um, Court Street and Sylvester Street, where we've seen, where it's kind of turned into this tunnel with the walls right up against the roads and the gutters where you feel like you are going through a tunnel as you're driving through our city. You know, th- those were, I believe, developed originally in the, in the county, I think, before this, before they were annexed into the city. Um, and so there's, there's, there's a hodgepodge of things there, but that, that feels like a very unfortunate part. And I, I'd hate to see this happen in Burns Road, where we end up with that same thing, where we end up with streets, sidewalks, immediately a brick wall with no vegetation in between. Um, I think, um, Councilman Milne has brought that up, that he, that's, that's one of his biggest pet peeves and um, kind of connecting our two, our two districts, and I, I wholeheartedly agree with that. And I'm afraid that if we deny this vacation, or if we don't deny this vacation, we're gonna end up in a similar spot where we won't have the ability to have the vegetation we need to create a good-looking road. I also hear a lot of frustration and increased cost for, um, reasons that are absolutely maddening to me and I'm, I'm sure my fellow council members of if, if we have created a situation as a city where we have, where we are increasing costs due to, um, you know, last-minute changes. This is not the first time we've heard of this. I know it happens in every city. There are, there are, there are things, you know, things happen. But unfortunately, I feel like most of the complaints we've gotten lately as a city have been city staff in some form or fashion coming at the last minute and saying, no, you can't, or now you must. Um, we're hearing that for code enforcement, we're hearing that from planning, we're hearing that from, um, we're hearing from people from, uh, on annexations that they didn't hear what was coming up and going on, so I, I'm, I'm feeling a little frustrated that I hear a very common theme with, in terms of complaints, um, about the city, and I'd be very interested not only in understanding, maybe using this as a test case to understand better what happened and why, but all the broader picture of why do we keep hearing the same thing and the same theme again and again? Um, I, I don't, I, I believe that as an organization, we should be growing and, and learning from our mistakes. And we'll apply those, those, those lessons more broadly to, to avoid similar type issues in the, in the future. And it feels like perhaps that's not what's happening in this case, so. Um, sorry for waxing a little philosophical, but I'd be very interested in understanding this specific issue, what happened? Um, and more broadly, how can we take those lessons and apply it later? Uh, um, I'm in favor of denying this va- this request for the vacation, and, um, with all apologies to the applicant um, and who's, who I feel is perhaps getting, um, getting a bit of a runaround from the city that we oversee. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Temeloni hit on kind of what I was thinking, is I, looking at this, I, if it's not too late, I'd like to kick this particular vacation off to Ubara for them to take a look at. If they're not already made a decision, I think this is a good case study for them to take a look at on ways we can improve on what they're trying to look at for us, so.
Thank you. Any further comment from council members?
Just, just briefly, I, I will, I will say I'm, I'm concerned that if we deny, if we, we push this decision down the road, then we're gonna hold the, um, the, the developer in.
Oh, there's, there's no intention, I just, with this whole vacation, I'd like to kick this off because there's still documentation that's being provided. There's still a case that was there. Uh, I think it's important, we've already made a motion and a second that we move forward on it regardless. I'm not in favor of d- delaying this any further.
Great, sorry, my apologies for misunderstanding.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Any further comment from our council to staff? Seeing none, we will move on to, oh, I am so sorry, I skipped the vote. Should we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Roach?
Yes.
Serrano?
No.
Compos?
Yes.
Milm? Maloney?
Yes.
And Barajas?
Yes.
That's five to one.
Thank you. Okay, now we do move on to item C, public hearing again, uh, East Lewis Place Right-of-Way Vacation, continue hearing to July fifth. Uh, Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This vacation petition involves a portion of the East Lewis Place Right-of-Way. It's located, uh, about a thousand feet or so east of Heritage Boulevard. Uh, the city engineer has examined the request and recommended that a revised survey be prepared that, uh, matches the right-of-way that's, uh, existing on, uh, neighboring properties along this portion of East Lewis Place. With the, uh, key component in mind of not coming up with, uh, inadequate right-of-way for future connections uh, through the Road Forty East corridor extending down to the Heritage Industrial Area that houses uh, the Amazon warehouses and, and, and most recently, a number of industrial development projects in that immediate area. Staff would recommend that, uh, council continue this hearing until July fifth for that survey to be prepared and for a, uh, deficiency in posting to be corrected.
Thank you for that, Director White. Um, any questions or comments to staff from council before I open the hearing? Mayor Pro Temeloni?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Um, thank you, Director White. Um, if I recall from our, um, upcoming agenda item for the transportation improvement plan, um, I think there's a project to, um, connect up northward, um, um, as, as part of to connect this area. So, that, that certainly makes sense to make sure we've done our full due diligence to connect that. Um, little frustrated to hear that we may not have properly noticed this. Um, that is, um, communication has been, um, a, another criticism we have the city has received repeatedly, so I would, I hate to see that, um, again. But so this is consistent, though, this, this is tied into that project as a proposal in the TIP. Uh, that's the real point here.
Y- yes, and, and in particu- yes, yes, Mr. Maloney, it, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments to staff before I open the hearing? Seeing none, I will now open this hearing, um, and invite public for comment.
Madam Mayor, I think at this point, uh, we could make a motion to continue it if somebody wanted to move forward with that, or if they wanted to speak on it. You can start it and then continue it.
Sure. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Baumann. I am the applicant. Um, I wondered, Rick, if you would explain again the reason for the delay. What, what further, um, surveying do you feel is necessary?
The, uh, survey will need to reflect, uh, forty feet of right-of-way staying along East Lewis Place, uh, which my understanding is, is, uh, different than the survey submitted with the application.
So, as best as we were able, my surveyor, I asked him to reflect the current standards for a sixty-foot right-of-way, which is the needs, is according to the transportation master plan, as far as we could tell. So this was, as best as we were able to reflect the standards and specifications that the city requires, is that, that we, we were not able to capture that completely?
Well, a- again, the city engineer's recommendation is that this survey be prepared so that we have the adequate amount of right-of-way pending the, uh, estimate, uh, anticipated future connection with properties in the Heritage Industrial Area through the Road Forty East corridor, that the city is actually taking steps to secure as we speak.
Okay, so, so the city staff feels that this will be a five-lane, a five-lane connector?
I, I can't answer that at this point.
Okay. Thank you. I, yes.
Thank you. Um, and again, I was reminded that this is a, uh, continuation for a hearing to July fifth. Uh, we're gonna move on to getting a, um, a motion. Sorry, close the hearing.
No, no, not closing?
We're gonna keep going. Correction.
I move to op- to, oh goodness, I move to, now that we've opened the hearing, uh, uh, so I just wanna jump to the continued portion of this. I move to continue the, uh, here, the public hearing for the East, uh, Lewis Place Right-of-Way Vacation to the July fifth, twenty twenty-two council meeting.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Mayor Pro Temeloni, seconded by Councilwoman Roach. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign.
I'm just gonna abstain. I'm still, quite frankly, not certain what we're achieving here aside from pushing this down the road. So rather than reflect an A that I don't fully understand, um, I'm just gonna abstain here.
Second abstainer. Two abstain, and four, yes. Thank you. And now we move on to item nine on the, on the agenda. Ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. We do have a quasi-judicial matter. Uh, Lamb five LLC zoning determination of annexed property. Director White.
Thank you, council and Madam Mayor. This, of course, is relating to the annexation that council just considered. Uh, the hearing examiner conducted a public hearing on the zoning, uh, for this proposed annexation, or now annexed area uh, in May, and has issued a series of recommendations, uh, consistent with the map on the screen. The examiner has recommended that a variety of zoning designations be given that match the comprehensive plan designations for the Road sixty-eight corridor, uh, and the area around it. Um, there has been no appeal of this recommendation, and I can, uh, try to answer any questions that council may have on this particular zoning determination for the annexation area.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a quasi-judicial, so I was gonna run through the script real quick, if that's okay with you? Great, alright. So this is a quasi-judicial matter, uh, that, uh, where, uh, the hearing is to render a final, uh, decision on the material presented as defined as a proceeding, which the council defines legal rights, duties, and privileges of specific parties in a hearing or other contested proceeding. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies. It must be fair in three respects, form, substance, and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts, uh, demonstrated bias for or against the parties, any direct or indirect financial interest uh, in the outcome of the proceeding, uh, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues, whether there has been any ex-party contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing, and, uh, any other conflict with, uh, that a council member believes would prevent them from hearing the matter fairly and partially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make those known.
Thank you for that. Mr. Ferguson, are there any declarations or disclosures? Looks like there is then.
And then, uh, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of the council from participating in these proceedings? Looks like there are none.
Thank you. So with that, I'd like to invite anyone from, uh, the public for any comment. Second call for comment from the public? Oh, sorry. Uh, Mayor Pro Temeloni, do you have a comment?
Yes, I'll, I'll, um, I'll, I'll just go ahead and make a motion if that's alright. Uh, I move to adopt ordinance number four, five, nine, four, assigning zoning to the Lamb five LLC annexation area as recommended by the hearing examiner, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's, there's a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Mayor Pro Temeloni and seconded by Councilmember Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. And it passes unanimously. And with that, we move on to item B, resolution lease agreement with Group Health Foundation for use of city facilities. And we have Director Ratka.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, good evening. Uh, in twenty nineteen, the Group Health Foundation approached the Pasco Economic Development Team about occupation of and, uh, creating a presence in downtown Pasco. Um, property search was conducted at that time, and it was determined that, uh, some, some tenant spaces within the old Pasco, uh, post office was adequate for Group Health Foundation's presence in the community, and, um, and, uh, and, uh, lease agreements or lease, uh, negotiations were conducted at that time. Um, an agreement for improvements and occupation was made, and Group Health Foundation submitted their own funding to renovate the space within the post office to provide offices, uh, upgrades to the passageways and restrooms to meet, uh, Americans with Disabilities Act uh, requirements, and, uh, significant mitigation of asbestos within their area as well. All long-term improvements to the asset that is currently city-owned. The improvements totaled seventy-five thousand dollars. As negotiated, under the proposed agreement, lease rates will be discounted until that seventy-five thousand dollars is, uh, rectified to the city as part of our agreement with the Group Health Foundation. The initial term of this lea- The initial term of this lease runs until May thirty first, twenty twenty seven. Within the lease, there are three one year options for subsequent renewal. Periods of time should the tenant provide adequate notice to the city. As stated in the staff report, per RCW three, five, eight dot one, one dot one, one zero leases of city property must be approved through resolution of the city council. Staff recommends approval of the proposed lease agreement. I'll stand for questions.
Sorry about that. Any questions or comments from staff, from, sorry, from council to staff? Councilman Serrano?
Just two quick questions. I see the lease indicates a commencement date of twenty twenty one. Does that change the twenty twenty seven termination date?
Uh, no, it does not.
Okay, just want to make sure. And what, what is the purpose of their use? What is exactly is Group Health Foundation?
A handful of three or four offices. Group Health Foundation, I am somewhat familiar with their mission. But probably shouldn't be adequately qualified to speak to it. But they'll provide nonprofit health services to members of the community downtown. This will be sort of a home base for office and administration.
They're, they're managing an investment portfolio of about two billion dollars. And so they're kind of the remnant of the old Group Health Hospital group. And as Director Ratkai mentioned, they're, they're a nonprofit and they provide grant funding for it. Beyond health, but a number of different opportunities for disadvantaged communities. And they've been working in Pasco, probably the last year and a half. And have contributed to a number of nonprofits within the city, including DPDA. Okay, so it looks to be primarily almost or maybe exclusively office use?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Per Tama Loney?
Thank you. And this is around, I seem to recall that they were one of the, they provided a number of grants for, for COVID relief for businesses in downtown. I seem to recall they, they, it was a six figure donation to some of those businesses. Is that, I'm seeing general nods, but I don't remember the exact number, so that, that's, that's clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, one thing that I did learn from speaking with a Group Health Foundation. They are not exactly related to the Group Health as far as the health portion of it. They are the foundation. So it's merely the grants, the funding of services. That geared towards helping communities of low income. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Yes, I move to approve resolution number four, one, nine, zero with Group Health Foundation for the use of city facilities located at four oh three West Lewis Street.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor, Mayor Per Tama Loney, seconded by Councilman Campos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. We move on to item C on the agenda, resolution change order number one. To the Design Build of America Phase One Agreement with the Zone Three Water Shortage Reservoir Report. Director O'Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm gonna turn this item over to our CIP manager, Maria Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
We are talking to you about our change order number one to Zone Three Water Reservoir. Storage, storage reservoir project, sorry. As you may remember, this is a progressive design build project. And what that means is that we are using a different delivery methodology than the typical one that we use in our projects for capital improvements. This type of projects, progressive design build include using contracts that are created through the American, the Institute. Design Build Institute of America. And the way this contract work, works is there is a phase one contract. Which is the contract we enter with our selected design build team that includes a consultant and a contractor. And the phase one of this contract includes developing design to a point in which we can enter a phase two contract. Where we can agree on what is the maximum, the guaranteed maximum price of our project. So all this to say, phase one provided for design development. So that we could agree on a total price for, for the rest of the construction of the project. That work that was done under phase one or is underway includes permitting and design. And during that design effort, we identified that there were long lead items that were much longer than in normal circumstances. Is shortage of materials, lo- long leads for delivery. The items identified were piping related items. So it's waterline material for the transmission main, yard piping, mechanical piping. Things that will be incorporated in our construction of the tank. So in anticipation of signing a phase two contract, this change order, which is the language that is used in this type of contract. Is as if it was an amendment, advances the acquisition of the materials. And I want to make very clear that although it's called a change order, really it doesn't increase the overall cost of the project. Instead, what it does is allows us to procure materials early so that they appear in the site. At the time in which we are ready to install them. This could be costs that we were to incur in phase two contracting. But because it's gonna take about six months to receive those materials, we wanna do it early. We talked about what was included and then if you saw in your packet, the change order is prepared in a way that follows the, the rationale. Of the phase one and phase two contracts for design build. And so it has specific costs for the materials based on a quote that we received last week. And the changes are, the, the costs are changing really quick. So we have a quote and then there is a percentage fee that is the, if you would say, an overhead and profit. That the contractor receives for all the administrative work of putting the order, coordinating the delivery and so on. And that is fixed. It's three point seven percent. And this was a clause that was already fixed in our phase one contract. And then finally, we have an escalation contingency of up to twenty percent. And the thinking here is that the authorization, should you choose to authorize this change order today. Would allow us to absorb any changes between the day that we received the quote, which was late last week. To the date in which the materials are shipped. Because right now, even if we were to put an order tomorrow, there is a surcharge that is unknown and not disclosed. Until the time the materials are, are shipped. And that is just the, the market in which we are. So with that, we are requesting your approval of change order number one for this project.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Do we have any questions from?
Just clarification, very detailed, very technical. I just want to make sure I understand and everybody else understands. So again, this, this is a change order, but essentially all you're doing is changing when you're getting costs. You're taking some costs out of phase two and allocating them to phase one, okay? And then what you're doing is you're trying to allocate those costs to make sure that you stay on your critical path. You're giving more lead time on long lead projects or items, your materials that you need to continue on your existing schedule.
That is correct.
Any further questions or comments from council?
I just wanna say, Ms. Sarah, I appreciate the, the report and have an understanding, not because of public works projects. But just in ordering in my day job. Internet infrastructure, we, we made an order about a month ago and said to expect nine months. Before delivery. And to live without fast internet these days is, is really to, difficult. So appreciate the change order. Thanks for letting us know.
Thank you.
Just then, no, thank you. And theoretically with the twenty percent, we could actually see this coming under the price, right?
That is correct. So the contractor wouldn't, the design build team would only get paid for the actual cost of the materials. Plus the three point seven percent, which is the percentage fee. The twenty percent is just to absorb the fluctuations. So we don't have to come to council several times with the same item.
Right, we appreciate you balancing that fluidity of price fluctuation. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barajas, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve resolution number four, one, nine, one. Authorizing city manager to execute change order number one to the Design Build Institute of America Phase One Agreement with T. Bailey Incorporated. For the progressive design build services for the Zone Threes Water Storage Reservoir Project.
I'll second that.
Moved by Mayor Per Tama Loney, seconded by Councilwoman Roach. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you again, Ms. Sarah, for making that so streamlined. Item D, resolution acceptance of work for Chapel Hill Park Project renamed Palomino Park. Director Ratkai.
Yes, thank you once again, Madam Mayor. On January twenty, January fourth, twenty twenty one, council originally approved the contract for what was then Chapel Hill Park, which is now Palomino Park. With total site services in the amount of seven hundred twenty eight thousand and six dollars. That did not include playground equipment and installation. On September twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, city council approved supplemental funding for the budget. In the amount of three hundred eighty nine thousand, six hundred eighty four dollars to update the budget bid amount and account for the cost of required change orders for this project. This also covered the cost for a separate contract for playground equipment and installation. And what that brought you last year was we were able to open up a five acre park in the Chapel Hill neighborhood that was much needed. It was one of City of Pasco's first parks that was neighborhood designed through a community effort. And provided a great focal point there as well. That was also the setting of the twenty twenty one Arbor Day celebration where we amazingly planted over sixty five trees in an hour and a half. I was there, Dave and my oldest son and among many of you and, and the community, and it was just a great effort. So we're finally here to accept the contract and the project is bid, is amended, it's complete. Materials and workmanship meets the standards specified in the contract documents. And we've got a great park out of it. So staff recommends approval of the resolution that accepts the work performed by Total Site Services for the construction of Chapel Hill Boulevard Park Project. Which is more formally known as the Palomino Park. And I'll turn that over to council for questions.
Thank you for that, Director Ratkai. I was there actually. And yes, it was, I believe, one of our first in person events. So I'm glad, and the family was there as well. Palomino family was out there as well. So I'm glad we do finally have a park in that area. Thank you for that again. Can I get a motion? Comment.
Sorry, we're not gonna escape without this one. I'm really surprised that Dave was able to plant sixty four trees in an hour and it took the rest of you guys half an hour to do one.
Any further questions or comments from council members?
Seeing one?
I just wanted to commend city staff on this park and the work that was done in, in bringing community together to get this together. And I just had a question out of curiosity. How did you set, settle on Palomino Park as the name?
Through the discussion with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, a number of names were presented and proposed. Palomino being a breed of horse in the Chapel Hill area, there was a, a number of names that were horse related put forth. But Palomino just stuck with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. We even went into, you know, horse bedding names and that kind of thing. So we figured that a, a, a breed of horse that was really indicative of the area, you know, in the, in the naming of the streets is how we settled on it.
Thank you. Thank you. And now we have a motion.
Yes, I like, I move to approve resolution number four, one, nine, two, accepting work performed by Total Site Services. Under contract for Chapel Hill Boulevard Park Project currently known as Palomino Park.
There's a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Mel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. And it passes unanimously. And we move on to item E, resolution ratify emergency order related to COVID nineteen and conducting public meetings. City manager.
Good evening again, Mayor, council. I'm gonna save you a little bit of time and not go into the long preamble of how we got here through a pandemic. But skip to Governor's proclamation twenty point two eight point one four and twenty point two eight one point one five. Are two proclamations we've been relying on for deviations from state statutes. In a number of areas, in this case, Open Public Meetings Act expired on June one, twenty twenty two. And then over the past several months, legislature and governor enacted new legislation related to OPMA. ES HB thirteen twenty nine, which codified many of the things that were in those proclamations. And created some new requirements relating to OPMA. So we have taken the emergency order that was originally issued by the then mayor Martinez. And ratified by council and modified that to come into compliance with the new state regulations. And Mayor Barajas extended the city's EO twenty twenty dash point zero zero six point two. Regarding the conduct of public meetings this evening, earlier this evening, we're asking council to ratify that emergency order. The approval essentially extends the in person meeting option to all city advisory boards and commissions. Which right now, council may recall, the, the earlier version did not include some of our boards and commissions for in person. More the regulatory, the planning commission and code board and, and some of those type functions. And then also will maintain a, a pre, the COVID. Virtual meeting options for, for the public and for council. Probably needs to be a broader discussion on city council, remote or virtual attendance at some point in the future. A lot of cities have some sort of policy on that. Right now, because of COVID, it was unlimited. But I've seen in the past where cities have had some requirements or. Limits on the number of virtual meetings. That may or may not be something council wants to discuss or entertain. But it's probably something that we at least ought to consciously do rather than by default. So throw that out there. We'll come back to you with, with some thoughts on that and work, work with some of our other partners, see what they're doing and, and MRSC. And get some best practices for council to consider. But tonight would just be ratification of the emergency order.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from council?
Yep, I have a question. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dave, for, sorry, thank you, City Manager Zabel, for going through that. So I, I guess I'm, I'm, I, I did not read the new House Bill thirteen twenty nine. So, you know, I guess that's, you know, my, my mistake there. But I guess I'm trying to understand is what are we extending this until? Like, is there? Because my understanding is the emergency orders have been lifted by the governor by and large. And so I understand the need to be compliant. I would like us very much to be compliant. And I think this, this hybrid environment has worked really well for this council. Certainly as some of us are traveling and, and, you know, being able to continue to attend in a meaningful way. Can you help me understand what this looks like? What, what does this change or not change? And when are we expecting this to last until?
You know, I honestly, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to address that particular question.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. The, no, so we're, we're kind of in no man's land here. So you're correct that some of the emergency orders from the governor have been lifted. A lot of our emergency orders are dependent on both our original emergency proclamation. And there's some changes that are gonna need to be made with regard to our code. This is really just a gap filler to get us to that, the place where we can actually make those changes permanent. But we want to make sure, because the new law went into effect, we want to make sure we were still, make sure we're in compliance with that. But we will need to make some substantive changes. So this will just get us to that point. But that should be coming pretty soon because now that that law's in effect, we want to make sure that we're not in a, a situation where we're not following our code. But at the same time, getting in compliance with state law.
So I guess, you know, I, I lost the thread here on, not, not from your discussion, but from understanding what the governor is, is and is not doing in the emergency orders. So there is still an active emergency order under which we can continue to comply with? Or we are extending ours in isolation of the governor's order to fill the gap until we can make permanent changes? in isolation of the governor's order to fill the gap until we can make permanent changes to ensure that we are, our, our practices that we're, that we're enjoying right now are compliant and we're, we're all above board.
That's correct. Yes, the latter.
Okay, I, thank you.
Any further questions or comments from council? Seeing none?
It's okay. Um, whoever wants to field this one. So would this essentially be an acknowledgement that the city persists in the state of emergency by, by ratifying this?
Uh, we still are because our emergency proclamation is still in effect.
So if we don't ratify it, we would essentially terminate that state of emergency?
No, uh, because you have a, a declared emergency that all these other emergency orders are based on, so the, um, I know it's been many, many, uh, it seems like, uh, ten years ago, but, uh, we had an original, uh, proclamation of emergency that, uh, uh, the governor, that the mayor issued, and then now all of our EOs are uh, subsequent to that. So there is a, a continued state of emergency that the city has because we still have, uh, a few EOs that are in effect.
Okay. I, I think. Okay, uh.
There, the, the governor, just to, I think this may help, uh, with, uh, uh, Mayor Potem's, uh, question earlier. Uh, there are, uh, the, the governor, we're essentially kind of in the same, uh, situation as the state, uh, whereas they still have many uh, of their, uh, emergency proclamations in effect. Uh, some of them have been allowed to expire. This particular one was allowed to expire because, uh, they passed a law. So it would still, uh, quite frankly, if the legislature hadn't acted, uh, to allow a lot of these things permanently through the, uh, the, the new bill, uh, we would still, uh, have that original, um, proclamation from, uh, the governor. Now, um, well, this is an attempt to, uh, make sure that we're still able to operate under ours, uh, since his, uh, is no longer in effect.
Okay. Just to make sure I understand, we're neither declaring nor extending the state of emergency under this action.
That's correct.
What we are doing is simply gap filling until a permanent position or whatever we decide as council can be made to ensure that we're compliant under newly enacted laws under the recent session, right?
That's correct. Yeah, 'cause your, your code isn't compliant with the state law.
Sounds like you're gonna have some work to do, I guess.
Add it to the stack.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. With no further questions or comments, can I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution number four one nine three, ratifying emergency order number twenty twenty dash zero zero six dot two relating to conducting public meetings.
Does a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Mayor Perdamelone, seconded by Councilman Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And it passes unanimously. With that, we move on to item ten on our agenda, unfinished business, item A, utility extension in the unincorporated island and urban growth area discussion. Uh, Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This, uh, particular request is, uh, one, to extend city water to a county subdivision, Spencer Estates Four located under the north side of Burns Road, just easterly of Shoreline Road. The request is to extend city water without the accompanying extension of, uh, sanitary sewer, city sanitary sewer to the subdivision and presumably without, uh, conformance with the, uh, city standards, um, regarding road improvements. The agenda report provides a history of council discussion and direction and policy on residential development in the UGA, particularly the two thousand and eight UGA, the old UGA that, uh, this, uh, subdivision is included within. Uh, as council, I'm sure, is well aware, there's been a sewer LID established for sewer service in the Broadmoor area, including this proposed area. And a sewer lift station is currently under constructance, and, excuse me, under construction south of Burns Road are related to the Solstice subdivision. Of course, these are significant, uh, uh, new, uh, conditions that didn't exist at the time some of the previous developer agreements were entered into. I know that the developers', uh, engineer is here, uh, to address council on this issue. And, uh, unless council has any directions, um, or questions for me, I will, um, uh, try to, uh, respond as appropriate.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, comments from council regarding this issue? Mayor Perdamelone?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Um, Director White, um, I, I was trying to pour through this document. There's a lot, a lot going on here, and, you know, this is a subject that is, is, is familiar to us. How close after the, um, development of the LID will sewer be to this property? How, how close did the LID get there? Because I remember a discussion, an earlier discussion about this project is that this would be significantly distant from any sewer, um, uh, services. But I don't recall the, the specific details, so could, approximate is fine. Please don't, don't expect that I'm, as you, you mean GPS.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant to answer that question because I'm not sure of the answer. My, my, uh, guess is, and perhaps, um, Public Work Director can help me out a bit on this one. It's, the lift station is almost directly south of the Spencer Estates Four. Uh, but the footage involved from Spencer Estates Four to that lift station, uh, I do not have the answer to that question.
I, I bring that up because in the past we've had, um, concerns about cost burden for developments. And where that has been, been a challenge in the past of how long do we, how far do we make a private developer move a sewer line or draw, or drop sewer line to, to, to connect these, um? Certainly, we, we had that conversation most recently in the, um, Riverview, um, area in the Donahol. Um, so it is, is very relevant to my, my understanding and consideration on this. My, I'll, I'll follow up with a different question, um, Director White. In the general area of this, I'm trying to look for a good map where, um, that, that, that hits me up, that, that helps tell the story for me well. So we're looking at, may, perhaps, um, um, our council packet, um, page twenty-four, that shows a, a more of an overview type map. Director White, when we look at, um, location-wise, um, do we have an anticipation of what areas around here will and will not be annexed or will not be recommended for annexation by, by, um, by staff or what we expect to have annexed? Will this be contiguous, this development be contiguous with an annexation at some point?
No, I don't believe so, uh, Councilman Maloney. Um, it, uh, of course, there has been interest in annexation for the undeveloped areas in the, uh, both the two thousand and eight and the, uh, the brand-new urban growth area. Uh, there really hasn't been much push at all for annexation in the developed areas. Uh, I know that there has been a bit of perhaps dissatisfaction maybe with the way things have developed, but none that have risen to the level of, uh, a serious consideration for annexation in these areas, the developed areas.
All right, thank you. Um, that's all the questions I have right now.
Any further questions or comments from council? Councilman Serrano?
Thank you. I just wanna make sure I've got a clear understanding. Um, these folks are looking to, as Councilman Maloney has indicated potentially, or you, as you've indicated in response to Councilman Maloney, that they're not necessarily looking to annex in. They're asking for extension of water, but then ultimately beyond one acre lots, um, with sewer, uh, or excuse me, with, with, um, septic and then some different water rights, or can you, uh, can you reiterate that to me, just to make sure I've fully understood this?
I'll try. I think the developers' engineer will be able to help council with that issue, but my understanding is, is, well, there, there's two things going on. First of all, the plat was approved in the county for one acre lots with onsite wells, onsite septic. Much of the surrounding area is served with, uh, city potable water and onsite septic. Um, the, uh, request was to extend city water to the subdivision presumably so the plat could be modified to, um, reflect one-half acre lots, the minimum for onsite septic systems. The response from, uh, the administration, Pasco, uh, city manager, was that, yes, that can happen. However, it must be accompanied by the concurrent extension with, of city sewer. Uh, so I think that's probably the kernel of the request tonight.
I appreciate that. Sounds like it'd be helpful in hearing from the engineer, at least from my perspective.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from staff? It looks like there is no further questions or comments. And so we should expect to see this in our next agenda?
Do we have the, um, engineer from the applicant here?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead and step forward.
How's that? Good evening. Um, Caleb Stromstedt with Octair Engineering. Um, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I wanted to give a little bit of backstory. Um, so everybody's on the same page and has the facts, um, to make an informed decision tonight. Um, I'm actually excited about this opportunity. Um, we see this as an opportunity. We have development plans in place to do a one acre development on a well in septic. Uh, we were here a year ago, um, wanting to do half acre, and actually, we, we presented a map. Is that available to show, Mr. White? It was the, uh, the letter that we submitted, the, um, it's the third page of that.
It, it is in the council packet, I think, uh, Mr. Stromstedt. It's outlined in red and blue.
Okay, if you're, so if you're looking on the council packet on your tablets, um, so my letter, um, with the Octair Engineering logo is probably about in the middle of this agenda item, and then two pages after, there's a, um, a colored map that looks like this.
Yes, it's roughly page twenty-five of the packet, council.
Okay, so now everybody's oriented. Um, the section in red, looking at this map, it's about three hundred and twenty-five acres. It's already been developed. Half acre lots in the county served by city water. This last forty acres around in the blue is the area we're talking about. Last year, we were here proposing half acre lots, and that's what was part of the spur for the resolution to define how are we gonna handle the extension of city water. Um, the decision was ultimately made to, um, require city development standards as a prerequisite to extend city water. That was the decision made. So we went back to the drawing board with the development team, reconfigured everything, and it just didn't make sense for the, 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 the project plan for that neighborhood. Um, those are all estate lots, um, and to put curb gutter and sidewalk in there didn't make sense with the development plans. So we withdrew the half acre, reconfigured, went to one acre lots, which you can do on well in septic. You don't need city water. We're moving forward with those plans. In the process of that, Chief Gear reviewed it and, and made a common sense question. We have a city water line. If you note on that, um, it would be in the southeast corner of that blue area we're talking about. He said, we have a city water line there. Why are we not extending city water to feed, serve fire hydrants in that development? The, the simple act, answer to that question is, we agree to disagree on development standards within the UGA, and we're going with the county standards. The county standards for fire suppression is to provide a twenty thousand gallon static tank that the county, uh, will have a tanker truck to fight fires in that area. And so that is the current standard. Um, we can do an improved standard by extending city water and having live fire hydrants there. That's the only reason we're here. We're proceeding with the one acre development. We got Chief Gear's comments, and we honestly didn't consider public safety during our last discussion of this a year ago. I reached out to City Manager Zabel. I said, Dave, Chief made some very good points here. It's just, we would obviously want to do half acre development like we've done and finish this infill out. Can we revisit this, have a conversation? He said, absolutely. We met in person, talked at length, and he said, what you need to do is, this is ultimately a council decision. I need direction from them because I would be going against their original directive to not extend city water, um, without these requirements. So here we are tonight. Um, we are specifically asking for the council to give direction, and that's where the opportunity comes in. Most of the time, council's working indirectly, saying staff work with developers. We're here tonight saying, City Council, you have the opportunity of the night to make this decision and partner with us on our shared interests, which is public safety number one, and we get an increased density. So we go from one acre lots to half acre lots. It's a fifty-five lot yield at the half acre lots versus a thirty lot, um, yield. At the one acre, it's, it's not significant, but the fire safety is, and it's an easy, yes, proceed with the utility extension agreement. Uh, per the letter that we proposed, the conditions, um, timing is critical. Um, so we are proceeding with the one acre development. Uh, we're close to having that permitted. Construction will start within the next month. And so that's what we've asked in our letter specifically for council to make a decision tonight. We had hoped to be on the, the May agenda. Um, that was a packed agenda as well, so here we are. And that's, that's really it. Um, I'd love to answer any questions. I appreciate if Chief Gear commented because he's the one that really spearced this whole thing. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for his comments. We would be proceeding with the one acre without city water. So if I don't get the opportunity to speak again, I appreciate the, um, the opportunity to speak, and like I said, I'd, I'd love to answer any questions and encourage, um, some really solid questions towards city staff, towards Chief Gear, and what do we want to do here? This is, it's your call tonight.
Thank you. If you wanted to stay there for a bit? Councilman Serrano, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just, just wanna make sure. I mean, it's been a long day for me, and I apologize. Solely the extension of city water, still running on, uh, septic, half acre lots, if, if we move forward with as proposed.
Correct, and, and I will, I, I did, uh, I'll bring up one point on sewer, so, uh, Mr. White was correct. The recent LID is, is, uh, bringing sewers southeast of the site, so it'd be almost a half a mile extension of, of sewer to get there. Um, to get there, we're gonna start at about twelve feet, leaving our, twelve foot depth, leaving our subdivision, be all the way down to thirty foot deep to make that connection. So if you can imagine a thirty foot trench, um, we typically don't build sewer that deep, but that would be requiring to make that gravity connection. The other option would be a lift station. This is a fifty-five lot subdivision. It does not support that. Um, and so just saying, put in, connect to city sewer, it's economically infeasible or unfeasible. Um, and there was one other point, but, um, the, yeah, the specific request to your, um, question, Councilmember Serrano, is we entered into a utility extension agreement for Spencer Estates Phase Three, directly next door. And the conditions were, you can, we can extend city water so long as we build the, the county road width to city depth section. And that was the sole term of that agreement, um, in regards to construction changes. So it was county road, county specs, section depth was deeper. Um, there was a park mitigation fee or impact fee that was also added that's paid to the city. And I remember off the top of my head, um, pay the school impact fees, that's in there. Um, with this proposal, we're, we also, we looked at our project performance and said, we can also, um, extend Burns Road or widen Burns Road right away, uh, excuse me, the pavement to a twenty foot width or half street width. So that's above and beyond, um, what the county would require. The county collects a mitigation fee. But at the end of the day, it, we just need a decision, and a no is a decision, and we'd respect that and move forward. But we hope it's a yes.
Any further questions or comments?
I do, but not for, uh, Mr. Stromstedt, I think.
Sure, go ahead, council. I'm Mayor Perdamelone.
Thank you. Um, so I guess you all have heard me speak pretty passionately about how I feel about sprawl, um, and how that affects the costs ultimately in many cases to the citizens who are our voters, who live in our city today. Um, and sprawl negatively affects the people who pay our taxes and, and, and vote for us today. Um, however, there's areas where it, it really doesn't make sense to hold to the same standards. Um, if I could have gone back in time and looked at the developments to the east of this area, um, would I have wanted to require sewer? Maybe, that, that's, that ship has long since sailed, and I don't have an option of going back in time and, and changing anything that has been done by previous councils, um, under their purview. I, I'm, for, for me, I, it, it makes sense from a public safety perspective, from a, um, minimizing the, um, minimizing sprawl, even if it's, albeit, um, just a, a small extent from, from one acre lots to half acre lots in terms of city water. Um, it, it seems to make some sense to move forward on this. Um, Mr. Zabel, is, is that in line with where you, with the conclusion that you've kind of arrived on independently? I'm not asking you to weigh in from a, um, to tell us how to make policy. Um, that's not your job, and I'm not asking you to do that. Um, but from a, from a, from a pragmatic perspective as to, is this gonna be part of the city anytime soon?
Yeah, wh- whether it's part of the city anytime soon or not is probably not a question. That's probably more a question for council and the property owners, but, uh, this is the last piece north of Burns, really, that can be a sewer. I mean, all of it eventually have to be because septic tanks don't last forever onsite, but that's a bigger problem than this acreage. There's some other pieces to the west that I think they kind of go over a hill, if I'm not mistaken. They kind of start to dip down and make. There's some other pieces to the west that I think they kind of go over a hill, if I'm not mistaken. They kind of start to dip down and makes it really difficult to sewer those. Uh, and, uh, I, I will to, to, uh, Mr. Stromstedt's comment, when, uh, Spencer Four to the east of this property, uh, developed at half acre lots, it was based on an agreement that the city council, prior city council made several years ago, ten, more than a decade ago now, um, that allowed for that half acre density out there. That property had frontage on the water main that was part of that deal, and I kind of caved on that one because that seemed like the fair thing to do. This one came up subsequent to our conversation we had a while back about properties, and remember we had the islands and we had the two thousand and eight, and we had the new UGA discussion, and I felt, uh, approving, uh, half acre lots, even though this is the last piece out in there, would be probably going against what we had talked about at that meeting and the kind of direction council had given us. And, uh, so that's how we got here today. And what I proposed, uh, in that letter, the conditions wa- what did include sewer and would have been at a higher density. Uh, so we kind of have three things. It comes down to three things. We have the council policies and goals, and, you know, whether that's the discussion we had on this very area previously, or your comp plan designations out in here, which you just adopted not that long ago. Uh, there's the pragmatic piece about, this is the last piece out there that's going to be situated like this. Everything south of it is going to be sewered and will be at a higher density. Uh, the county has approved a one acre lot. And the developers indicated that they're ready to build on a one acre lots with onsite septic and onsite potable wells. And fire flow would be provided through a cistern. We do not have the equipment to pump a cistern. So even if our engines showed up first out on that site, uh, from Pasco Fire, they'd have to wait for fi- the Fire District to show up, to have the equipment to be able to pump out of those cisterns to, uh, put out any fires out in that area. And the developer has indicated and did, as representative did so tonight, that, uh, if council were to approve this, they would, um, redesign their plat for half acre lots. So that's, that's kind of where we're sitting. It, I, I don't know that one acre lots on onsite wells and septics is a desirable. Half acre lots are probably less desirable than one acre lots. I'll put it that way.
Other way around.
Or, sorry, half acre, one acre lots are less desirable than half acre lots. Thank you.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
For your goals.
Thank you, City Manager.
They don't meet your goals, but, yeah.
For, uh, for the additional context. Yeah, so there's times where they were accepted to make sense, um, and I, I, this distracts me as one of them, so I don't see any value in, um, trying to force sewer. Uh, obviously, that we're past that point, and it makes sense for a public safety perspective. Even if these aren't, um, you know, residents of the city of Pasco may not be for many years to come. Um, either way, it seems to make sense to, um, to provide the city water, um, and make an exception to our discussion. I expect as we continue to, um, develop the annexed ar- the area, we just annexed, um, a couple of meetings ago, um, and the area to, you know, to the south of this, this area, yeah, we'll, we'll be continuing to hold to those, but certainly I, I think that we're, we're, we got a good balance point here. Um, as Mr. Stromstedt said, he would support of, um, finding that middle ground, so I'm, I'm supportive of that, that direction for this, for, for this particular development. Thank you.
Appreciate that. You mind if I make one more comment for clarification? The, uh, if, if it's a county development and they are requesting to, to connect with city water, and the requirement is to extend sewer and be, have it sewer by sewer, you can't, unless it's in the UGA, you can't extend sewer to that, and so, um, I just wanted to make that clarification. It would probably trigger annexation and, and it gets a little more convoluted because when you develop to city standards in the county, the county says, that's nice, but it's still our right of way, and we're not going to maintain that with curb gutters and sidewalks and streetlights, and so it's, the water, the water line is being used as a leverage arm to get city standards, but it's, it's really a backdoor thing that's, that's not to anybody's benefit unless it forces annexation, and that's the ultimate desire, um, because we're, I'm thankful for this discussion here, but to, for the broader discussion. Um, you know, in the development community, we just want to know what we can do. And when it comes to the development standards between the county and the city, we feel like the child and the parents are getting a divorce, and we just get pulled either way. And we just want to know whose house we're staying at tonight and what we're going to have for dinner.
I appreciate that, um, vivid analogy. Um, the, I will say that I have been const- constantly disappointed with the county not willing to come to the table and, and um, work on joint development standards as required by state law. So, um, I'll just make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from council?
I was just gonna say, I agree with Maloney, uh, Councilman Maloney, wholeheartedly. I think, uh, whatever we could do to, to have more houses, make it more affordable for some folks, because not everybody could afford more acreage, um, I think it's, is different, but I, I do agree that, uh, we should, uh, bend on this one and, and go forward with the water. So that's my thought.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. City Manager.
Well, I, I was just gonna say, if there, um, unless there's a counterpoint of view, I think we have sufficient direction to work with the developer at this point.
Sure do. It doesn't look like we are opposing this. Thank you.
Since, since, since we have everybody's attention, I just wanted to be clear. Um, we, we were very specific in our letter, and our fear would be that this kind of spirals into additional conditions is, or is that the direction that, um, the utility extension agreement is going to be, the terms are going to be as described in our letter? Or is it going to be an evolving back and forth?
I'm assuming that's going to be involving a back and forth.
Yeah, the, I think there needs to be some back and forth, but I, I think we can find a, find a, a place. I don't probably think a council member, our council meeting is going to be the place where we're gonna work out every detail.
It's not, but it could, your, what you just directed to do, the timing of those back and forths, we get to unreasonable situations. We don't have a public hearing to go to. And so even though you gave that recommendation tonight, there is a chance, if the direction's not clear, that this spirals between nonproductive discussions, and it's a, my job is to identify risk and give you options. That's what I do for my clients, and I'm just making that clear. So if it's going to be vague, there's a potential that it couldn't work out. If it could be more specific, that would be our preference.
And, and I don't think I'm prepared to be more, too much more specific. That is outside of my, my discipline and really our, our role as city council, I'd say. Um, we are, we're a policy setting agency, not a specific, uh, design development, um, experts. Um, but I would ask, um, City Manager Zabel, do you have a timeframe in which we could, we would expect this to be resolved? Because obviously, you know,
I would, I would think sometime, probably in the next two to three weeks, we can work through this and I can report back to council progress we're making, and if we're hitting a loggerhead, I can let council know, and we can talk a little bit about what the sticking points might be.
Right, so we, so we potentially talk in maybe, um, to, uh, council member, uh, council meeting two weeks from now and at least get a status update?
Yeah, maybe a status update.
Great, thanks. Now we will stay on track.
Does that sound amenable?
That's excellent. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you, City Manager. So with that, we will move on to new business, uh, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight, six-year transportation improvement plan. And Director White, I have you for this one.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I think in the interest of time, I'll just turn it directly to Dan Ford, our City and Chair.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Ford.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I've come before you for probably the last six years, I think, for, uh, you know, new, uh, six-year transportation improvement program each year. Each year, it's added more and more projects, and I'm happy to say that there's been quite a number of those that have been accomplished. Uh, but this year, I'm really excited to introduce our newest, uh, addition to, uh, the department and, uh, our long-range plan coordinator, who's actually gonna do her first presentation this evening on her this year's tip, Jessica Bracken.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. As Dan said, my name is Jessica Bracken, and I am the Long Range Plan Coordinator for the city of Pasco. I started with the city in March of this year, and, um, this is my first time attending and presenting to you all. And my, also my first opportunity to meet most of you. I am an East Coast transplant, so I, and I've been moved here from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, so I've been working hard to get up to speed with many of the planning efforts happening in the city, and in particular, these transportation projects. Tonight, I'm reviewing the updates of the twenty twenty-three six-year transportation improvement plan. Uh, two weeks ago, you will recall that you were presented with a preview of this plan that focused on the heritage industrial area, uh, projects. That was presented by Mr. Dan Ford, um, and tonight we will go through the entire tw- uh, six-year tip.
You can abbreviate in version, right?
Yes. I'm gonna try to strike a-
The nine P M. version?
Right, the right balance between going through it and, you know, giving its due ca- cause, but also being mindful of everyone's time. So quickly, the, uh, six-year tip, as you all are probably aware, um, is required by state law to prepare a comprehensive transportation program for the ensuing six years. That is consistent with the comprehensive plan, includes bicy- bicycle and pedestrian facilities. It's adopted by July first after public mea- hearing every year and, uh, filed with the Secretary of Transportation within thirty days. Um, so to do that, we are presenting today, and in two weeks, we will have a public hearing and a motion for adoption. If that is approved, uh, and adopted, we will submit to the state. Um, there were ten projects that were completed, um, or are, uh, planned to be completed by the end of this year, and I've provided those for you. Um, with our, all the growth that is happening in the city of Pasco, uh, the six-year tip has increased again and is now included, uh, up to sixty-eight total projects, um, a whopping twenty-nine of which are new. You also see in your tip handbook that there is a status for each project that is available, um, as either new, ongoing, or carryover, carryover being a project that was previously included but not yet started. Ongoing be a project that was included that was started, and of course, new being a brand-new project for this year. Um, in this year's tip, we also decided to make some adjustments to the organization and presentation of the projects. Frankly, with sixty-eight projects, we reached the point where presenting them all on one map with titles and identification was just no longer feasible. Um, so now we have divided the map into five different regions, as you can see on this overall map. Um, the, in green, there is what we call the central Pasco region, which includes the area that is bound by uh, Highway three ninety-five and south of, uh, I one eighty-two and extends to the railroad, and of course, is also bound by the river. In yellow, you'll see the east region, which is everything east of the railroad. In yellow, you'll see the south, I'm sorry, I think I said yellow before. In orange, you'll see the east region. In yellow, you'll see the south region, which is everything south of I one eighty-two and west of three ninety-five. In blue, you'll see the north region, which is everything north of, uh, I one eighty-two, in, in between Broadmoor Boulevard and the railroad. And in red, you'll see the, what we call the west region, which is everything north of I eighty-two and west of Broadmoor Boulevard. Also on this slide, you'll see that there are two citywide projects we included on the overview page. It is our annual pavement preservation project, which extends every year, and the third phase of the citywide traffic signal improvement project. These colors also coordinate with the tip workbook, you'll notice. We'll move on to central. So this slide highlights what is in the central Pasco region. Um, there are a handful of projects that are included in, in the central business, business district of downtown. And they are also being studied with the downtown master plan. Those include the Lewis Street corridor projects, both Phase One and Two, which extends from the Lu- Lewis Street overpass where reconnects into the traditional Lewis Street alignment all the way over to Tenth Street. Similarly, um, we are studying and are planning for projects on both Clark Street and Columbia Street. And also a festival block street from, on Fourth Avenue from Lewis Street to Columbia Street. Um, outside of the central, the immediate central business district, we also have a Court Street overlay project and a, uh, Sylvester Street safety, um, improvement project that also includes, um, some bike ped improvements at the overpass of three ninety-five. Over in the east, we have quite a few projects that are associated with the heritage industrial area, which you were presented, um, two weeks ago, so I'll skip over those. But also, we have the Oregon Avenue overlay, some James Street improvements, two, um, intersection improvements, and also the overpass, uh, Lewis Street overpass project is due to, to be completed next year. In the south region, we have a number of projects, um, including the western portion of the, uh, the, uh, Sylvester, thank you, the street, um, uh, safety improvements. Also, uh, the western portion of the Court Street overlay, and also some Court Street safety improvements. Uh, two hair- or two, uh, bike ped multi-use, uh, projects, one being for Sacagawea Heritage Trail, and one being for the Franklin County Irrigation District Canal Bicycle Ped Pathway. Also some improvements at, um, Road one hundred and, uh, Road sixty-eight. Up in the north, we have what will be the, um, Road seventy-six overpass, which obviously is included in the south as well, but you have to pick one side for it to be included on. Um, we also have some, um, a number of projects in and around Road sixty-eight, um, including a, a project at Burns Road to extend to the east from Road sixty-eight. Um, improvements to Sandiford Parkway. Um, just east of Road sixty-eight, there, we will be extending Clemente Street north from Wrigley to Sandiford. Um, a few intersection improvements, and then an extension of Road fifty-two, um, all the way up to Clark Street. And then finally, in the west, we have many projects associated with the Broadmoor area. Um, this is being studied with the Broadmoor Master Plan in, in coordination with that. Um, and also, a handful of projects are being considered for tax increment financing. Um, those include the extension of Sandiford from, uh, Broadmoor Boulevard all the way over to Road one oh eight. Does this work? Yes, it does. This is one oh eight. Um, and also Road one oh eight from Sandiford down to Harris to the south, and then, um, improvements to Broadmoor Boulevard up to Burns Road and the intersection with Burns Road, and also the, uh, portion of the extension of Buckingham Drive. Furthermore, uh, other projects that are considered for this area are an overpass eventually from Chapel Hill and Crescent Road over across the highway to Harris Street, eh, or Harris Road. And, um, additional perv- extension and improvements to Sandiford all the way out to Shoreline. Um, a realignment of Shoreline, improvements and widening of Burns Road. Uh, and a few new roads in, including, uh, one oh, one oh three and one oh five. And that is a very quick summary of our projects. I know this doesn't go into very much detail about any one individual project, but I would like to open it up to any questions, if there are questions about specific projects or updates. Thank you.
First of all, thank you, and welcome to the city of Pasco. Uh, Councilmember Campos.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Bracken. I appreciate the timeliness of this. I've got the Good Roads meeting here, not this week, but the following week. Is there a single project that sticks out in your mind that's worthwhile to mention to the Good Roads Association that you're working on or might be proud of? Also, again, welcome to Pasco. Um, street names are hard, and especially learning your way around, so I'm hoping you're an expert by this point, right? Couple weeks in, yeah, you're good to go.
I had to learn all the roads as opposed to the projects.
Yeah, exactly. And then, um, no, great, great presentation, great job. Again, if you had anything that you think is high level, you want me to talk about it, Good Roads, I'd happy to take it from you.
That's, that's one of the things about what you're seeing in front of you. I mean, that's one of the things that's very exciting about Pasco, and, you know, you could pick Broadmoor area. You can talk about the, the tip projects, which Jessica mentioned briefly, uh, and the importance of those on that area and the connectivity, and what that will bring to that area as far as development goes, but then again, there's the heritage area. Um, and, you know, maybe, uh, you know, that area as far as its connectivity, uh, you know, the distribution facilities we have out there and the developers that we currently know are, are, you know, developing out there as well. And the importance of that, and how to make that safe and, and, and make it, you know, connective for everybody also. And then not to leave out, you know, I know there's been some mention and discussion about Dairy Gold and the Ryman facility. And then not to leave out, you know, I know there's been some mention and discussion about Dairy Gold and the Ryman facility with the port, uh, and the improvements that they're making out there, so it's really hard to pick just one. But, y'all, leave it up to your discretion.
You should, you should mention all sixty-eight projects. Any further questions or comments from our, uh, council? Mayor Protemaloni?
Thank you, Mayor Rosson. Uh, also, you know, welcome to the team. Um, I'll, I'll start with an unfair question for you, so you can just turn over it to Mr. Ford immediately. So many of the projects that we're seeing on the TIP, on the TIP were, are also included on the CIP. Um, you know, um, obviously, a lot of those new projects are the definition we've gained from getting a much higher res- resolution of what was going on in the Broadmoor area, as well as in the um, uh, the Heritage Boulevard um area there with the industrial development. So obviously, that's a lot of where the new projects come from. On the CIP, one of the things we, we, we did as a city for the CIP was we inputted the data into a mapping software that's interactive um and allowed us to, maybe be able to go like a webpage and actually go like zoom in and be able to check some of these things out. Is there any reason why the TIP isn't using that same software that we as a city use? Or is it, is it in that, and I just haven't, I, I don't have access to it. Um, can you?
Do you want to answer?
I can start.
Okay.
It is and will be um in, in those, as they get turned over to CIP projects.
We had originally intended for the TIP to be in, in that same interactive type of software, but because of the timing and, and our, our need to get this in through the RCW and the requirements of, of schedule, we, we chose to just do this. It will, uh, I will say, uh, without hesitation, that our, uh, finance folks are very anxious for us to get this stuff entered into the CIP package and make that available.
Great, I appreciate that. It just seemed like, um, I appreciate very much, I was, I was initially skeptical about the way it was broken down into regions. Um, because I can, I feel like that can be very polarizing. It can make us feel very, uh, parochial about our areas instead of thinking about the city as a whole, which is, which is that balance that we as council members in a district-based system have to, have to face all the time, so I was very concerned about that. But it really lent itself well to this, and so I think the mapping software provides those same benefits, while also providing additional ones in terms of um ability to, to review that and then look at it a different way. Um, the other question I had was, um, and it's, um, was actually in an email I'd sent, which was um about, about the Ryman Industrial Center and the lack of projects on there and related, related to that on the TIP. Um, the response I got was that it's, um, because the port is already funding those, we don't need to ask for more money. But I didn't understand the um purpose of the TIP to be funding-specific, but rather coordination and collaboration to make sure that, what, there's one picture about what the transportation improvements need to be over the next few years. So I, I guess I didn't find that answer to be particularly satisfying, that it's just a funding mechanism. This is more than different than a funding mechanism, so is there, are there missing projects in that region that would typically fall within the TIP scope that are maybe, were, were overlooked because of the port's involvement? Or is it, everything's in here and those other ones that are maybe missing are just not the right projects for a TIP?
Yeah, I think probably the latter is the answer to that question. Uh, you know, if we were to add every private project, and there are a number, uh, for example, Sandiford, if you look at the Sandiford Termini, uh, Sandiford Parkway, it goes all the way from Bedford all the way to Shoreline. Uh, there are multiple different segments of that road, of that road improvement, and multiple pieces of that either will be included in the TIP or be done by private development. Private development is really probably one of the bigger considerations. We have not included every road that we anticipate. Resources is another one, uh, that, you know, another project that was mentioned, and, you know, why isn't some of the roadway improvements associated with that shown on the six-year tip? All of these, there's, there's a, a determination that's made or a criteria, at least initia- you know, internally, that is made that, you know, how are these projects impacting the citizens? You know, is it beneficial to the citizens? Is safety a consideration? Is it a further connection of something else? Or is it specific to that improvement or that business or whatever it might be? In the case of Ryman, most of that is very specific, uh, very localized to that area. Doesn't have a great deal of impact on others. Very similar to Resources, uh, that, a- again, making some fantastic improvements and whatnot to an existing road that's already there, but uh probably doesn't fall into that criteria, especially with seventy projects. And again, just to go back, you'll notice that we've compressed many of these to try to get that down to seventy so that it's not overwhelming also.
Great. The only, my only final, final question or comment would be that, um, we know costs have changed and do change, um, but in this, there's, I don't have a good way of, of following the puppy tra- trail without, um, without more work than I can do on my iPad. Um, I would really appreciate understanding the projects that are continuing or ongoing, how those prices, how those costs have changed since the last TIP. So if I can get a summary of that, and maybe, um, you know, obviously, if the explanation is just that, um, inflation's, um, is something we're dealing with, um, and that's, that's the explanation, I, I get it. But if I can get a little understanding of, of how we, how we re-scoped or changed some of these projects significantly from what we approved before. The point of these plans, right, is we approve them, and then we understand, and then we, we approve them, and then we understand the changes for it. I don't understand the changes between this last tip and, and, um, the last tip and this tip, other than these new projects and the list of completed projects. So that balancing between, I don't know how those have changed, and I would like to know. Thank you. And that, that, I would like that to be offline, of course, not tonight.
Yeah, not, not a problem, and, and I will mention, you know, this, as, as maybe I mentioned with the heritage information I provided, this is a very high level. The tip is intended to be a very, very high-level planning effort. It's not fiscally constrained such as a CIP might be. And so that the numbers that you see here, we tr- we do try to work through those. We do have a consultant that we work with to try to make sure that those are realistic numbers. But again, they are very high-planning level estimates.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from council? Thank you for that presentation.
Absolutely, thank you.
So is it, is it general consensus we take a five-minute break now before executive session?
And for one more item.
And before one more item before that. So we will take a five-minute break and return at, um, at nine twenty-
Three.
Three. Thank you. Nine twenty-three. Okay, so we are now resuming our meeting and moving on to item B on our agenda. Council appointment process for council position number three, voting district number three. Now I'm gonna pass this off to direct, uh, sorry, City Manager Dave Zabel.
So I just really wanted to give council a quick, um, and quick, some quick thoughts on a timeline and then get some feedback from council. So with uh resignation of Councilmember Torres, obviously, we have a vacancy. Uh, and we've already made Franklin County Auditor's Office and Election Division's aware of that, uh, thanks to our very efficient city clerk. Uh, so trying to, you know, get this seat filled, uh, our thinking was, uh, by June tenth, we could publish the vacancy announcement, so that, just a few days from now. Uh, our, our proposal would be to keep that open to the twenty-seventh, uh, which would be a little bit more than two weeks. Uh, week of the twenty-seventh, we feel we can review the applicants, uh, make sure that they all meet the minimum requirements, the residency, registered voter, those kind of things. Uh, whatever the application, uh, you know, that we typically use for boards and commissions, uh, and make sure that application's complete, and then we can get those forwarded to council by July first for council review. Uh, we could have, uh, July eleventh workshop meeting uh to conduct the interviews, the candidates council wishes to interview. And then, uh, that's, that's a workshop meeting, and then you can take action July eighteenth, uh, on an appointment. Or we could schedule, uh, a special meeting after the interviews, then council might be able to take action on the eleventh as well, so. Uh, probably need a little bit of direction on how you'd want to do that, and then if this, uh, schedule kind of works out for you.
Any comments from council members, Councilman Campos?
I could weigh in here, seeing as I'm probably the subject matter expert on what it feels like to basically come from the audience to then sitting up here to make decisions matter. Um, I kind of like that process, you know, i- if you're willing to do your homework and come prepared, I think it's, it's actually a pretty easy transition. And, um, it, you know, again, just to make note, I don't know if, uh, councils were last time some of the questions, right, in the process. Um, I think if, better briefing, I think there's just some technical difficulties on that part, since some of the, uh, council members were remote. Uh, that'd probably be my only input, is make sure that every candidate gets the same, same questions without it, uh, changing.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Um, Mayor Protemaloni?
It's great. I'll be very brief. Um, that sounds like it would be about a month from post, from the, the posting going out there to when we would appoint. I would suggest doing a special meeting on the eleventh, if that's appropriate. Um, I, I don't think let, making someone wait a week or making us wait a week is necessarily beneficial. I can only see that the process after the questions could, could, could create additional bias and, and back and forth that I think are, are, may not be fair to all candidates, so I'd rather we do the interviews and ma- and, um, just make the, make the appointment then. Um, a month, I think, is fair, um, for, for appointing someone.
Any further questions? Councilman Serrano?
Thank you. Uh, I agree with that. You know, as expeditiously as possible is, uh, the best practice. Now, this term lasts till November, and the individual would have to rerun, or how long's the term?
Uh, lasts to the next general election.
So November?
November twenty-twenty-three. The next time some-
Which would be twenty-twenty.
Yeah, so the next time anyone, uh, is up for election with, with the council, which would be twenty-twenty-three. So, uh, this appointment would last until November twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you.
And then they run- And they would run for the remainder of the term.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Even though the next general election's in November of twenty-twenty-two?
The next general election that's on the cycle.
For council.
For council.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on the cycle for council.
I missed that last, last.
Um, well, I didn't, I didn't state it that-
Okay, no, that's fine. Now I understand. Thank you.
That gives me a follow-up question. So it wouldn't fall to the cycle of the seat that was just open, it would? It, it-
Yeah, it's kind of, it's squirrely, so essentially what happens is, uh, the person run, or the, the person gets appointed, and then they have to run at the next election of anyone that's, that's actually on the board, so the next, or the, or the councils. That would be twenty-twenty-three. Uh, that person, if they chose, uh, could run then. Uh, and then they would be running to serve the remainder of the term. And then they run again when the seat comes up, at its normal term, in twenty-twenty-five.
That's a lot of running. Thanks.
So, man, it is pretty, it's fairly common. Yeah.
Better get your track shoes.
So I agree with the, with the rest of the council members. Um, we should do a special meeting right after our last, uh, um, interview and appoint someone that evening. Any further comments? Any, uh, oppositions? Looks like we have a plan. City Manager, um, any further comment?
No, I, I got it. Thank you.
Perfect. So we are now going into, uh, item number twelve miscellaneous discussion. City Manager.
Just a couple items. Uh, so AWC conference, uh, we do have mayor and mayor pro tem registered. Uh, want to make sure others are aware of it, and whether or not they want to attend, just let, uh, April or I know. Uh, we do have opportunity for appointment of delegates. So the two, obviously, the two, uh, attending council members would be delegates to the, to representing the city in the election there. Uh, wanted to kind of turn it over to Zach. Uh, one, we, we did talk a little bit about the barbecue already. We had about sixty volunteers. Uh, we had a, the other thing I, and I want Ja- Zach to maybe, uh, talk about this a little bit more, this STEM program grant from Legends Casino, and also to give you a bit of a ACA update.
Uh, thank you, uh, City Manager Zabel. Yeah, so recently, we were awarded a small grant, fifteen hundred dollars from, uh, Legends Casino, uh, for STEM- Yeah, so recently we were awarded a small grant, fifteen hundred dollars from, uh, Legends Casino, uh, for STEM programs. This was, uh, conducted, um, by Nolan Harper, one of our lead recreation specialists. He facilitates our after-school programs, so this will provide, um, fifteen hundred dollars to go towards science, technology, engineering, or mathematics, uh, sorts of activities for our after-school program, which is one of our more, uh, well-attended, uh, daily programs we have throughout the year. So we're, we're pretty excited about that and, uh, really opens the door to, to working with that organization for additional recreation grants as well. So, uh, we're pretty excited to have that come in. And then, yes, uh, quick updates, uh, we've issued, uh, some information to council last week, but, uh, late last week. Um, but we do have an update on the animal shelter project, so we're at ninety percent design, uh, right now. Looking at June and July to really be the, the time periods where we finish up the final stages of the design, get to a hundred percent, submit to the Pasco building department as the building's being constructed within our city limits, uh, for review. Um, during that time, you will see a right-of-way vacation for the property come forward, um, through the planning department and up to council as well to s- clean up the lot lines on the property. Um, July, we anticipate, you know, the back and forth of building permit review, making corrections to those drawings to make sure that the building is within, uh, the codes that we've adopted. Um, we anticipate August to be the month of, uh, city final review and acceptance of the building permit plans and, and drawings, uh, with the bidding process commencing in late August. So that would be the bid advertisement period for general contractors. Um, we would look to about mid-September, thinking September thirteenth for bid opening date. Um, rounding it out with the final meeting in September, um, the twenty-sixth for bid acceptance and contract approval bring forth to the city council. Um, October is mobilization and contracting, and then we anticipate a November first groundbreaking, or early November at least, but tentatively scheduled November first as a groundbreaking for the new animal shelter, so. Um, it took a while to get to this stage and a couple of iterations, um, a couple of different sites that we've selected. But, uh, uh, we're, we're, we're at the ti- we're at the time where the plans have, uh, been finalized and we can give a little bit more, uh, serious consideration to the dates ahead and, and, and let the public know. So that I'll turn over any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Yes, I'll just make it real brief. Zach, thank you for making this a priority. It seems like, you know, we got a lot of comments from the community and I'm not sure that everybody out there understands, you know, how important we're, it seems like they're focused on the old building, not really realizing that we're making efforts to put a new building out there. And so, um, thank you for making that a priority and, and trying to get that done as fast as you can.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, but this has been a continual work process. I know some of the comments in the community have said this project's been on hold or, or we haven't, but, and really we've been hammering at it, uh, pretty hard, um, behind the scenes with our design team as well, so. And we'd certainly like to extend a debt of gratitude to those who are working currently at the shelter. Um, arms rolled up or the sleeves rolled up to really put in that effort to help out the community. Um, our animal control officers out in the field as well, uh, doing a lot of great work and it's a, it's a daunting task for all three cities, for sure.
Great, absolutely. Thank you for the updates on the animal shelter. Um, and like you said, kudos to those that are still out there helping, volunteering. Um, I do have one comment that I want to add, one, uh, invite actually from Habitat for Humanity. We did mention they had just given out the keys for their hundred and forty-ninth house. Um, Pasco is receiving, is actually doing their hundred and fiftieth house this next Saturday. So they're inviting council, city staff, anyone out in the community is invited to, um, the key, uh, giving of the keys of the hundred and fiftieth Habitat for Humanity house on fifteen oh four East Alveena this Saturday at noon, so you're invited. That's it for me. And with that, uh, we do actually have need for executive session. Um, discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero uh, one I and performance of a public employee per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero one G for thirty minutes.
Madam Mayor, if I could, that was supposed to be F, I'm sorry.
F. Do you need me to repeat that?
No.
Okay, so, item F for thirty minutes. So what would be an executive session until, uh, ten oh five?
Madam Mayor, do we wanna do about twenty or twenty-five? We could start with that, 'cause I think we'll, we, we should be able to go faster than that.
Okay, we will go into, into executive session until, uh, nine fifty-five.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And we are extending our executive session for five more minutes to 9:59. Thank you. So it is 10:00 PM and we will be extending our executive session five more minutes to resume at 10:05. Thank you. Good evening. It is 10:06 and we will be extending our executive session for five more minutes to 10:11 PM. Thank you. Good evening everyone. It is 10:11. We will be extending executive session for five more minutes to 10:16. Thank you. It is 10:16, 30 and 30 seconds. We are now back from executive session and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you everyone for staying this long. And have a good night.